I'd like to call them March 19th, 2024, meeting of the Duncan County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters that the board votes on at our meeting this evening. Okay, we come to the consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any questions about the item on the consent agenda? Does any member of the public have any question about the item on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as it's published?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we now come to public comment. And we have a list of folks who've signed up who indicated they want to speak during public comment. So I'm going to go through the list. But once we get through the list, if there are any other members of the public who wish to speak during the comment period, there'll be an opportunity to do so. And everyone has three minutes to speak. There'll be an orange light that goes off when you're about 30 seconds left, and then a red light will go off once your time's up. We do ask that you discontinue your comments once your time's up. We want to give everyone the same amount of time. And I apologize if I mispronounce your name in advance. Okay, the first person that signed up is Chip on the Waste Pro item. Hey, Chip, come on up.
Good afternoon. Is this a good time or would later in the meeting be more appropriate?
There's not a public hearing on the other item. So yeah, now is
Okay, great. Well, I'm Chip Jingles, RVP for Waste Pro. And just wanted to speak a little bit this evening on behalf of my company. I understand that a recommendation will be made tonight on who you want to provide your services for, starting in 2025. And I just want to state a couple of things and appeal to you about our company versus our competition, I believe. Number one, I understand that we've been in Buncombe County for over 14 years now. And we like the relationship. We've built a great relationship with the county. We'd love to see that continue. I know that our competition is a company called FCC. I can't pronounce their name. They're not from around here, from overseas. But, you know, they don't have any businesses near us, you know, not within a 300-mile radius. And you just think that that's important, that you understand that. You know, they don't have any kind of customers that resemble what the western North Carolina Buncombe County looks like, okay? So on our customer service piece, you know, we like to go above and beyond. During COVID, you know, we continued services. We picked up items outside of the cart. We continue to do those things. We like to go 100% above and beyond. We pick up premium homes all the time at no extra charge. The cost for those is, you know, it's like over 1,400 premium homes we pick up that we're not compensated for. But we do those things just to try to help the community and the county out. And the big thing you'll find out about is our people. You know, our people have intimate knowledge of the routes, you know, and they have been with us for, some have been with us for quite a while. And they're very valuable. They're a really strong asset for us. And, you know, we plan to keep our people as long as possible. And, you know, we're talking about FCC. You know, I know that they'll make a lot of promises to you, but I hope that everyone does their research. You look at areas like Polk County, where it's been a challenge for them to maintain their staffing. Other places like Omaha, FCC missed 7,500 homes the first week of service. You know, and in Lake County, they actually had to issue a refund to every single resident. And so lastly, I just want to say, you know, this is personal for me. I came into Buncombe County back in 2015, helped correct our service then. I'm a member of Leadership Asheville. I've been a proponent of getting carts out there and cleaning up the community and also introducing technology, like using the automated service truck. So it's personal for me, and I appreciate your time.
And thanks for being here. So it's certainly fine for folks to comment on this during public comment. And this is an item that will be taken up at two different county commission meetings. So there'll be other, there'll be further opportunities for discussion and input as well. Okay. The next person that signed up is John Wright.
Commissioners, how are you?
Good.
I just want to say, you know, I've been with the company for, I want to say, 14 years. And, you know, through my tenure at the company, you know, it's been an awesome place to work for. You know, I've been there through the challenges Chip has spoke with in 2013 and 14. We've stuck together, we've worked through that. You know, as of right now, our service is bar none compared to what it used to be. You know, we've stepped up, we've got the automated trucks in. I really hope you guys vote to keep us in. You know, it's very personal for me, too. You know, I've been with the company for 14 years. Waste Pro actually bought the company I worked for before. And, you know, it's super personal because, like I said, I've got a relationship with my customers that I help every day. I've been with the company for so long. You know, I was a mechanic. I've been a person that rides on the back of the truck. I've been a maintenance manager, I've been a supervisor. I've worked with, you know, Dane Peterson a lot in my 14 years at the company. You know, I choose to be here. My father owns his own trash company in Asheville. And I choose to work with this company because it is a great company to work for. And, you know, we provide a lot of things to you guys. I mean, like Chip said, the backdoor stops. Man, some of these roads we go up are unbelievable. Like, the new company, you know, if you don't go with us, you know, I plan on staying with the company as long as I can. But some of the roads we service, you know, we like to call them dirt trails. But they are, you know, they're just next level. They're not, if you're not familiar with, which we struggle because, you know, like Chip said before, we bring in drivers from Charlotte to help us provide you guys good service. You know, that's one of our things that they struggle with. And they're only, you know, 100 miles away. So the terrain here is way complicated. You know, this new company might not be able to do that. They might not be able to provide you with the service that we provide you. And I really hope you guys decide to stay with us because we do want to continue to provide you guys with a great service. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Philip Sadler.
Good evening, Commissioners. I am Philip Sadler. I am the interim division manager here. And first of all, let me say, I'm from Charlotte, but Asheville is my home. I've been here more than I've been in Charlotte. I mean, honestly, because we're out there so much in the public eye and things, trying to get things done. There have been challenges because, you know, the terrain here is by far, you know, a little different than most. I've been in the trash industry for over 30 years. I've worked for one of the largest out there almost 20 years. I've been here almost 10 years. And I can tell you, coming from the military, that this terrain and this area is complicated. It's definitely complicated. Closest thing to it is probably, you know, somewhere in California, NTC, are some of the challenges that we face over there. But here, on a day-to-day, you know, dealing with, you know, the team that we have in place, and this is just only a few of the people that we have here from the communities and things. You know, it's a great team to work for. Waste Pro is a great company to work for. They go beyond, above and beyond every day, you know. I think the owner, which, you know, if you ever met him, I'm sure you have, he really loves Buncombe County. We've invested a lot since these 14 years have come in, and we hope to continue making investments because, you know, technology changes. And sometimes we go through things here in this area as far as the climates and the weather and stuff like this right here. So, you know, we want to make sure that we're able to service everybody the way that we're supposed to. You know, we try hard. You know, I give our guys and girls kudos for all the efforts they put out there every day. So I just want to thank everybody in Buncombe because, you know, we do love it here. This is my home now, and we do appreciate it. We thank y'all for, you know, thinking about Waste Pro and things because, you know, we do love it here. We are part of the community, we're just not here. You know, we're good stewards, and that's how we want to continue. So you want to reach out to us, we're here. You know, we just thank y'all for thinking about us. All right?
Thank you. Will Wallace.
I'm Will. I'm a non-commercial driver with Waste Pro. I've been employed with the company for about a year and a half. Safety is my main goal when I'm out here on these routes. Our routes are intense, especially non-commercial. I have the one-lane roads, the dirt mountain roads, about the equivalent of Jeep trails. You just have to be very cautious, you have to know what you're doing. Sometimes there's a lack of sales service, and just my knowledge and my coworker's knowledge gets us through the day. Whereas a potential competitor could not be overly familiar with the area, and those mistakes could be made. I know my customers, I take pride in my routes, and I build relationships with them. I'm not just a trash man, I don't just dump the can. I know the customer, I know their preferences. I've been in sanitation for about 15 years. I've been with Waste Pro Commercial Sanitation for about a year and a half. I'm young, I want to make a difference. I see a great future here at Waste Pro. We really do take pride in our work, do the best we can, and get home safe at the end of the day. I mean, we're a good company, we care about the community. We have workers like myself and others that are just very familiar. Some of them grew up here in Asheville. I grew up in Roanoke, the same mountains. The terrain, we know it. And we try our best and do our best. So we look forward to continuing business with Buncombe County.
Thank you. Juan Alejandro.
My name is Juan Alvarado. I've worked in Waste Pro for like five years. And me and my team, we work on the most difficult routes, backdoors, premium service. I'm just going to give you an idea, just the backdoor guy, he got like 200 backdoors a day. I mean, 200 Monday to Friday. So that was a lot of backdoor service. I just to give you a sample how hard it is to clean up your neighborhood, to give you the best service to the customers. And I know it's just, this is just the business, just the numbers, just money. I don't know who else tried to get this contract. But I'll be honest with you, they don't have idea what's going on in the street and the trash business. So it's going to be a mess when you don't know the area, when you don't know the people, when you don't know the customers, it's going to be a mess. And something I just want to say is like, we have like almost five-star Google reviews. And I really appreciate my customers and our customers. So if we need to listen to somebody, we have to listen to the people. Right? So I was going to say, we try the best. We have a really, really great team. Sometime we miss something, maybe somebody don't like us. But that's what it is, maybe somebody don't like you, right? So that's what it is. But we try the best all the time. And the service to customer all the time, give you the most quality, the much it can. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next person signed up, first name Brian, and starts, last name starts with an S, but I'm sorry, can't quite read it. Okay, great, thanks, man.
Hello, I'm Brian Stepp. I'm from Charlotte, North Carolina. I've been up here helping Waste Pro for four and a half years. You hear us talk about the terrain so much. You know, some of these roads we go up, you look up on the mountain, you say, "I would never buy a house up there." Then you say, "Am I going to drive this trash truck up there?" It's something else. This new company coming here, and I drive every day up here. Like I said, I've been up here for four and a half years. This new company, they can tell you and promise you whatever. I'll honestly tell you, they can't. You've got to be experienced, you've got to know what you're doing, you've got to take into consideration and be safe. You know, we love our customers, we know them. This is something personal to us. You know, kind of feel like we don't deserve it, you know, we hate it. But I understand business is business. But I'm telling you, this new company, do not listen to all them promises. I'm out there in that field every day. It's dangerous, we take our time, we get it up, rain, sleet, or snow. When that snow and that mountain comes, it's different. We take our time and we go get it. All I just, you know, just consider, I keep more and say, listen to the customers. Our customers love us, we personal. That's all I got to say. Thank y'all.
Thank you. All right, Eric, I think Conley.
Good morning, good afternoon, y'all. My name is Eric Conley. I've been with Waste Pro for 14 years. I'm actually the longest tenured employee that we have at Waste Pro. Great company to work for. I just really saddened me that, you know, we're going through this again. And I really hope that y'all take into consideration all the employees that we have out here, trying to get up everybody's trash and to service their in a timely manner and just, you know, it's just, it's kind of hard the way things are right now. Y'all just really need to think about staying with Waste Pro and not going with a different company. Because it's GPS, and it's going to take them forever to try to get everybody's trash, like roads upon roads, mountains. It's just, I just don't see it really happening for a new company to come in here and to be safe and to do what we do every day. And I just really think y'all should take another extra time and look and to see what we're doing and just think about it a little bit longer than you're doing it. So that's all I got to say right now.
Thank you. All right, the last person that signed up is Matt Barker.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Matt Barker. I'm from Swanonoa, where we have narrow, steep, one-lane roads with the extra hazard that none of you fellows mentioned, the bears. That's another challenge that our friends at Waste Pro have become accustomed to dealing with. So I appreciate and respect their work. I'm here just to revisit the Swanonoa Library Issue. I'm a member of Friends and Neighbors of Swanonoa, and I'm part of a working group that has representatives from the Friends of the Swanonoa Library and the Swanonoa Community Council. And we wanted to make sure that we had at least one voice back here this week to say thank you for the action that you took at the last meeting when we had about 40 people here. And judging by the group of people here today, we timed it well. So we were happy to be able to present our case to you and to feel like we were heard. But we also recognize that as an essential first step in a process that has yet to play out. And so we wanted to highlight the fact that that is a necessary beginning that was needed to align the county's process with the values that the county professes of respect, integrity, collaboration, honesty, and equity. And I have not seen my community energized like this in the nearly 20 years that I've been living out there. We are excited about the future of Swanonoa, and we are eager to work with the county and partner with the county in a process that is going to involve public input and transparency. And we are continuing to meet and continuing to build momentum and gather information so that we can be effective, full participants in that process in the hope that we can ensure ongoing enhanced library services for Swanonoa in Swanonoa. So you'll be hearing more from us in the near future. And thank you for the opportunity just to come and present this word of thanks and let you know that we are ready to engage and work in that process.
Thanks, Matt. All right, that's everyone that signed up. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak during public comment? Okay, well, thank you to everyone who took time to come out and speak during public comment. We appreciate it very much. Okay. We've got a couple items under presentations. The first is a proclamation recognizing Agricultural Awareness Day. And Commissioner Terry Wells will read the proclamation. And I think Jennifer Harrison from our Agriculture and Land Resources is here on this item as well, maybe with some other folks who are here as well. Thank you all for being with us.
Yes, we have the Buncombe County Farm Bureau Women and several of our FFA students with us as well from our local high schools. So if they'll all join me. And while they're getting up here, I'll just share that we have some really wonderful, strong programs with the FFA across our schools. And then this week, we've been going out with the Buncombe County Farm Bureau Women and FFA students and doing ag literacy in the schools. I had the pleasure today of being with them at West Buncombe Elementary. And they're going to be doing that all week.
Great.
And so
Yeah, this is my roadmap for the week.
Here we go. County of Buncombe proclamation, Buncombe County Ag Awareness Day. Whereas March 19th, 2024, has been designated as National Agriculture Day to remind the public of the importance of agriculture to everyone. And whereas Buncombe County has over 1,000 farms and more than 70,000 acres of farmland, which produces almost 50 million in cash receipts in Buncombe County. And whereas the Buncombe County Commissioners have recognized the importance of preserving farmland in the county through its support and funding of the Farmland Preservation Program, which helps preserve working farms and open space in Buncombe County and contributes to the economic health and environmental well-being of Buncombe County. And whereas the Buncombe County Commission has set goals, a goal of, set a goal of 20% of Buncombe County will be conserved by 2030. And whereas the Buncombe County Commissioners continue to support the state of North Carolina's Forever Farm Initiative, which provides support for the conservation of farm and forest lands. Buncombe County currently has 26 forever farms in the initiative and a total of 82 farms and forest lands permanently protected. And whereas the Buncombe County Commissioners recognize and value the Buncombe County has a rich agricultural history as demonstrated by the 27 century farms recognized by the state of North Carolina as being owned and operated by local families for at least 100 years. And whereas the Buncombe County Commissioners recognize the strong development of the next generation of agricultural stewards as evidenced by the vibrant FFA Future Farmers of America programs we have in our local high schools. And whereas the Buncombe County Commissioners understand the important role Buncombe County farmers and agriculture contribute to maintaining a strong economic base in Buncombe County. And whereas the Buncombe County Commissioners recognize that Buncombe County farmers produce safe, affordable, and abundant food and fiber products that are used and consumed by Buncombe County residents and visitors every day. And whereas the Buncombe County Commissioners desire to recognize the vital role of agriculture and the unique and irreplaceable value that farmers, foresters, and other agriculture stewards bring to Buncombe County. Now therefore, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners hereby resolves and declares March 19th, 2024, as Buncombe County Ag Awareness Day. This 19th day of March, 2024, signed, Brownie Newman, Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners. And I do just want to make one more comment. The ag census, Buncombe County is number three in the number of farms in our state. So we're the number third county, which I'm really proud of, that we have such a strong, vibrant farming community here. And I will turn this over here to Jackie Galisby, who's head of the Buncombe County Farm Bureau Women, to share some comments.
Terrific.
Thank you, Terry, and Commissioners, and thank you for having us today. While I speak just a minute, our students here have a couple of things to hand out to you guys. So I have Julian Melina Smith from Owen. And she's got a little booklet that I put together because we're going to highlight our FFA kids. So this is everything you wanted to know about FFA. And then we have Lily Wright from Reynolds and Jackson Reeves from Irwin. And they have a little gift bag, ag bag, as I call it. These are products from Buncombe County. And then we have Brooke Everly and Molly Ponder from North Buncombe. And they have some little things that they put together from their chapter to give to you guys. So we'll let those hand those out and so proud of these kids, these young adults. And if you look on the last page of your FFA booklet at the FFA creed, it says, "I believe in the future of agriculture." And this is what our future of agriculture looks like. The other thing is, as Terry mentioned, we've been, my goal was to read to all the second graders in the public schools in Buncombe County. There's 21 schools, we're scheduled in 19 of them, so we've got eight day on. We've got a few more to go this week. But so we're trying to teach the kids that, you know, we know our food comes off the farm, but we're taking it a step further. We're looking at the fiber, we're looking at the other products, you know, that they use every day that you really, maybe they don't think about, that comes off the farm. So that's kind of where we're going this week. We also have two century farm, we have soil to add from two century farms. They're new to Buncombe County this year. One of them is Ava Morgan. She is on our Buncombe County Board, and she's on my women's committee, her and her husband. And then Stephen Slocom. So I have a soil sample from his farm. So we have two new ones to add to our jar as we go out. But once again, and just thank you for the opportunity. Remember every day when you sit down to eat, thank a farmer.
All right. Thank you all so much for being here. Appreciate you.
If anybody wants to go rig with us this week, you know how to get in touch with me. It's like all the volunteers we can get.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. All right. The next presentation we have with us from the North Carolina Attorney General's Office, Holly Jones, Senior Policy Advisor and Program Manager, to provide some updates on the work of the Attorney General's Office as it is relevant to Buncombe County and western North Carolina. Holly, great to see you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Commissioners, for this opportunity to share some specific information about Buncombe County as it relates to the work of the Department of Justice. For the last eight years, Attorney General Josh Stein has led the For the last eight years, Attorney General Josh Stein has led the Department of Justice and has been very dedicated to transparency and accountability, thus my presentation here today. I'm sure most of you all there understand the role of the Department of Justice, but for citizens watching and anybody that wants to get a refresher, just, there's basically three arenas that the Department of Justice is in charge of, well, not in charge of, but promotes, and that is preventing crime and supporting law enforcement, safeguarding consumers, and defending the state, its people, and the Constitution. So this presentation was going to have examples of several of these roles. So first off, I wanted just to give you some, just some brass tax numbers as it relates to dollars. First off, these are the funds that have come into Buncombe County since 2017. And the first number will be very familiar to y'all. It's the $32 million from the opioid settlement fund. That is the portion for Buncombe County specifically. And let me just, again, this is information that you know, but highlight for the public that this $32 million is money that will be determined, its use will be determined by Buncombe County, by Buncombe County to be able to address this devastating addiction, as well as think about promoting prevention. And let me just say that our office has been so impressed by the thoughtful discernment of Buncombe County's use of these funds and to be really good stewards of them. You've definitely made an impression. In addition to that line item, our Consumer Protection Division has won back about $176,000 for Buncombe County, I mean Commissioners, consumers that they were maybe a result of complaints of bad actors or illegal business practices. Our Medicaid Division has won back about $42,000 with Medicaid fraud cases. And in addition to that, taxpayers have also benefited from grants and other funds to the tune of $462,000 for a total of, grand total of $32,700,000. Not too bad. So moving along to another priority of the Attorney General's, which was to clear the backlog of sexual assault kits that were across the state. In interview, there were about over 16,000 untested sexual assault kits across the state. And of all the kits that were required to be tested, we are about 99.9% tested. We have completed the testing, which is a great thing, and we are almost, almost done. In line of the accountability, we have a dashboard that citizens can go and look at the progress of all this testing. It's, I'm looking here just to make sure I read it right, ncdoj.gov/ test the kits. What I'm showing you right here is the portion about Buncombe. So you can see at the top there gives the highlights of the Buncombe numbers. So a few years back, there was about 707 kits that were in the backlog inventory, and that included Asheville City, Black Mountain, Woodfin, Weaverville, and of course, the Buncombe County Sheriff's Department. Over the course of all these years, and let me just say, they did a great job in doing the due diligence to get those, to review those kits and to get the ones that were needing to be tested, you know, in the pipeline. To date, there have been, the vast majority of them have been tested that have been submitted, and we so far have about 175 CODIS hits. And I do want to let you know that the DOJ, we have a team to support local law enforcement as they look back to reopen these coal cases and give them fresh eyes and give them fresh reviews. So we're hopeful that some of these crimes get a second look. So in terms of other services that have been offered, we have, through our Crime Lab, reviewed about 11,178 pieces of evidence, and the Justice Academy has trained about, in Buncombe County, through their certificates, about 757 law enforcement agents. So these are other wins that are important, that, they're not specific to Buncombe, but I think they're important for you all to know about as it relates to the work of the DOJ. First Jewel, North Carolina was the first state to sue the company Jewel, the vaping company, and really address the youth vaping epidemic, and we won $40 million. And that's money that's being used to help either teens or young people quit vaping or promote prevention on the front end. And as you know, vaping is more popular with teens than regular cigarettes, and it's highly addictive. We all know how annoying robo calls are, and so the DOJ takes this very seriously, too, and we had a big win with the Dish Network. We won a settlement of $14 million, and the money for that went to our North Carolina Public Schools. The company made illegal robo calls, and they were held to account. With partners, we were also succeeded to get the coal ash cleaned up, and that was a benefit to North Carolina Duke customers to the tune of about $1 billion. We were very happy about that. And then we've won two substantial lawsuits against Google as well. So I'm going to keep on moving. And so just some other actions that, again, you're going to know about some of these, but just to review, we've got, as it relates to ongoing efforts, these are in progress, not concluded yet. As it relates to HCA, in December 2023, Attorney General Stein sued HCA Healthcare for failing to comply with the asset purchase agreement it executed when it purchased Mission Health in 2019. The suit alleges that HCA is not providing the quality-consistent emergency and cancer care for Western North Carolinians that it committed to deliver. And also, another ongoing thing we wanted to bring to your attention is that we have also joined a lawsuit against Meta, which is the parent company of Instagram and Facebook, alleging that their designs, the way they've designed their social media platforms, really hook children and teenagers, and also deceive the public that these platforms are safe and suitable for young people. The final effort I wanted to make sure that you were apprised of has to do with Duke Energy, and the Attorney General has appealed to the North Carolina Utilities Commission, their decision to grant a rate increase to Duke Energy. The Attorney General feels like that is too steep. If the Supreme, North Carolina Supreme Court does not, you know, go along with the Attorney General's motion, we're going to look at about a 15% hike for customers, which would calculate to an increase in a few years of about $20 more a month. So I've highlighted some ways here, and this here, how you can work with local government. And to no surprise, the Buncombe County is doing a great job in working with the DOJ in so many different areas. The lethality assessment program, all the law enforcement agencies here, as well as HelpMate, are grand partners in this and are doing a fantastic job in implementing this life-saving program. The outreach initiatives that we are involved in, Buncombe County has been a great partner in, and I wanted to thank Commissioner Edwards for her participation. Oh, by the way, that's Buncombe County Schools right there on the other slide there, and I see Dr. Jackson in the audience, and wanted to thank, in addition to Commissioner Edwards for her participation, the hosting of Buncombe County Schools in partnership with Asheville City Schools. It was a very important discussion. There's probably about 100 people there, and talking about social medias, it was a town hall, talking about social media's impact on youth. Also, this is a little commercial for me. I'm going to be in Fairview Library doing a presentations on frauds and scams. So if anybody would like to schedule a presentation for their group about frauds and scams or online safety, you can find me at hjones@ncdoj.gov, and I'd be happy to come to your group. So there's just a lot of ways that this community is really taking part in the services that we have as it relates to educational outreach. Final few things to make the connections at the end. Since the Dogwood Awards have been given out, and the Dogwood Award is an award given by the Attorney General annually that recognizes citizens that promote, that people become safer, healthier, and happier in their communities, and so it's kind of a broad category, but we've had 11 here in Buncombe County receive this award, several of which were Buncombe County employees. So let's hear it for Buncombe County employees. In terms of the environmental grants from the DOJ, Buncombe County has received about $426,000 plus, including two particular projects that I wanted to remind you of, the Southside Community Stormwater Project, as well as conservation of 247 acres in the Broad River watershed. And finally, in a program that we started a few years ago to work on this challenge that we all have in terms of recruitment of public safety officers, it's called the Criminal Justice Fellows Program, and that's a program that works to recruit high school graduates to come into the law enforcement, and it's a forgivable loan. But Buncombe County has had someone participate in that, and they have finished the fellowship, and they're completing the BLET. So that's another exciting connection. So wanted to just end by, you know, if folks wanted to reach out, there's a couple of slides with all sorts of contacts with our different divisions, because we do a lot, and hopefully that will be a resource for citizens that want to know more about these issues or file a complaint or schedule a presentation. But I really do thank you for this time and this partnership with Buncombe County. And on behalf of the Attorney General, thank you for all you do to keep Buncombe County a safe place to live. So thank you so much.
All right. Hey, thank you so much, Holly. Commissioners, are there any questions? Okay. Well, thank you for the update. It's apparent from the issues that are being worked on, there's a lot of common ground between the interests that we work on from the county level and are being worked on from the state level as well. So we appreciate all the updates and work on behalf of Buncombe County and Western North Carolina.
Thank you so much.
Yep, all right. All right. Commissioners, the, we do not have any public hearings. Any items under County Managers' Report?
No reports, sir.
Okay. And no items under Old Business, so moving on to New Business. The first item is consideration of a resolution approving the financing of the Lake Shore Villas Affordable Housing Project with proceeds of multifamily housing revenue bonds to be issued by the Housing Authority of the city of Asheville. And Chloe Donahue is here to help us out with this.
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. So the next item for your consideration is a tougher resolution from the Housing Authority of the city of Asheville, which will allow them to issue bonds for the Lake Shore Villas Affordable Housing Project. So just to give a little bit of background, Lake Shore Villas, as you all may remember, is our 120-unit affordable housing project in Arden, North Carolina. And the county has invested in this project through affordable housing geo-bonds as well as COVID recovery funds, which equates to a little over $5 million. So another major component of this project is their 4% low-income housing tax credit award from the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. And Mountain Housing Opportunities is the developer for this project, and they approached the Housing Authority to operationalize their 4% light-tick award and be a conduit issuer for up to $23.5 million in multifamily housing revenue bonds, which will then provide financing to the Lake Shore Villas project. So the Board of the Housing Authority approved the bond issuance at their January 24th board meeting and then conducted a public hearing at their March 4th meeting. And this is in adherence with the tax requirements imposed by the Internal Revenue Code and the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982. So the county is being asked to approve the issuance of these bonds because we are an applicable elected representative of a government unit, having jurisdiction over the area where the project is located, because it's in the county. So the approval of this resolution does not constitute any endorsement or financial obligation by the county for those multifamily housing revenue bonds being issued by the Housing Authority. And also, I'll note that the Board considered similar resolutions for the airport and Lenora Ryan University in the last couple of years, as just to jog your memory. So the resolution and the summary of the public hearing were included in your packet. They were prepared by the Housing Authority's Bond Council and reviewed by our legal team. Kristin Kirby is here tonight from Maguire Woods to answer any questions that you might have. And the request tonight is for the Board to consider approving the resolution as presented by the Housing Authority, and then they'll move on to next steps.
All right. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions?
Just, excuse me, just to confirm, so this is a legal process, but no financial obligation on our part?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion?
We should approve the resolution.
Second.
Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, being opposed. All right, thanks, Holly.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is the School Consolidation Feasibility Study, and Rachel Sawyer is here to discuss this item with us.
Good evening, Chair and Board of Commissioners. My name is Rachel Sawyer, and I am here with you this evening as Strategic Partnerships Director for the county, representing this project, the School Consolidation Feasibility To begin by letting you know what we're requesting this evening, the requested Board action is for the consideration of the approval for a vendor to conduct the feasibility study and also to consider approval of the budget amendment to pay for the study. Some of the information that we've included in your packet for this evening is a refresher. I've been in front of the Board recently with an update. I will quickly summarize the information so that those members of the public who are following along can stay up with the process. But essentially, this is a result of a piece of legislation passed by the North Carolina General Assembly last fall, which required the Board of Education for Asheville City Schools and the Board of Education for Buncombe County Schools to jointly study the feasibility of a merger. And Buncombe County was asked to, and Commissioners voted to accept the role of lead entity for that project. I've included the text of the legislation in the packet as well as a reference. You may recall, when I've come and spoken with the Board of Commissioners in the past, we've looked closely at the specific language. And so as a refresher, this legislation requires that this study be jointly conducted and that findings and recommendations be submitted back to the General Assembly by February 15th, 2025. So we will keep that in mind as we structure the study and its deliverables and the actions that our local bodies take, the Board of Commissioners and the school boards, at the conclusion of the study. Wanted to refresh on the approach that we've taken, the creation of a local project team. Our county manager and the two superintendents, each designated a set of individuals to serve on a project team, which is serving in advisory capacity. I would like to acknowledge that we do have representation from our school districts here this evening. Dr. Jackson, Superintendent of Schools for Buncombe County Schools, and his Associate Superintendent, Dr. Reed, are here, along with a member of the project team, Kristin Keithley, who serves as a parent representative from Glen Arden Elementary School. And we also have representatives here this evening from Asheville City Schools, Superintendent Superintendent Dr. Furman is here, as well as Assistant Superintendent Dr. Dickerson, Mark Dickerson, and the CFO for Asheville City Schools, Heidi Kearns is here, as well as some folks representing the school board for Asheville City Schools. We have a couple of elected officials in the room with us as well. You'll recall, we use the structure of an RFP, a Request for Proposals. In our role as lead entity, it's our job to hire the firm to complete the study. So this was the mechanism that we used. It was a call for proposals. It opened up last December, and we had a lot of great interest from vendors, ultimately receiving seven proposals when the application deadline came in January. And those proposals ranged from $57,000 up to around $1.5 million. A refresher on the scope of that Request for Proposals. We designed this with input from the project team, and we designed it in alignment with that legislation that talked about educational impact, as well as financial impact. So we're really looking for a study that is going to cover a wide variety of areas, including quantitative and qualitative data, centered in equity, and centered in community engagement throughout. Ultimately, to identify, to study the data, identify similarities and differences, and come up with recommendations. We're asking the firm to include that as part of their deliverable, and if there is a recommendation of any type, impacts both short and long-term, and projections and scenarios. So quite comprehensive. Last time we spoke, I shared with you about the review process that was underway. So this is a reminder of the review criteria. We had of that larger project team, a subset of a nine-member group that did the reviews, looking at philosophy and approach, the project plan and timeline, the qualifications certainly of the firm and of the individuals who will be working on the study, and cost. The recommended vendor is Prismatic Services Incorporated, and we are joined this evening by Dr. Tasha Prieto, who is the Principal with Prismatic Services. In case you all have questions for her, she's available to answer questions later. Prismatic Services, there's a little bit of information here about the firm. It is a North Carolina-based company, a woman-owned firm, that does work within the educational space from pre-K through 12, and works with customers throughout North Carolina and across the country. As we looked at the comments that came from the reviewers in their scoring and in the interview process, there were a few things that stood out that we've included for your awareness. The review group felt that Prismatic demonstrated a strong understanding of the project and those broader contextual factors that we talked about. They had done their research on the background in all those various previous studies, certainly that have occurred, asked really great questions throughout the process, has experienced staff. The reviewers appreciated the hands-on and candid approach that Prismatic Services is proposing, demonstrating a confidence and a competence, and notably bringing an objective perspective, coming in with a curiosity, looking for compelling information to drive whatever findings or whatever recommendation might result out of this study. The full proposal from Prismatic Services is in your packet. This slide has some summary information about their proposed approach, a tight process around project management, incorporating all of those various comprehensive elements that we were looking for them to include in the RFP, with an emphasis on communication at all stages, an emphasis on rigor, and reporting back. You heard me mention hands-on, and I'll talk about their onsite work in a minute as well. Quickly, refreshing on the deliverables, we're going to get a report at the end of this. We're also going to get a consumable, brief version of the report that all stakeholders hopefully can be able to access. We're going to get presentations. Last time I was here, we talked about the potential that that presentation might go to the two school boards and the county commissioners at one presentation. That's an interesting idea that we will continue to talk about as we go out through the process, but we've required that they do publicly present to your board and the Boards of Education as well. This cost is $301,543. This is where that onsite part was that I was referencing. 19 onsite visits, 75 onsite days, by far the most amount of onsite work that we are seeing in the proposals. This budget amendment that is in front of you for this, to fund this study, will rely on fund balance, because we have not received any outside funds to cover the cost of the study. And this legislation was passed after Buncombe County had already adopted our budget for this fiscal year. So you've seen the timeline before. If the Board of Commissioners approve this evening, we will move right into project initiation. And the report will be due to us by the end of December, so that January can be reserved for presentations and discussion, with February of 2025 being when the information is submitted to the General Assembly. A little bit of information about what project initiation looks like. We'll get together, obviously, with that project team. We'll be receiving initial data requests and requests for interviews with local leaders, and certainly be working a tight timeline of activities to complete all of the work within the nine-month of active timeframe. So that leads me to the Request for Board Action again. This is what we are putting in front of you tonight for your consideration, certainly open to any questions that the Board may have for me or for others that we've brought with us this evening.
I do have a couple of questions about some of the content in the proposal. One thing was, when it was talking about the community meeting locations, it said that it would do it in the municipalities, which just seems like they need to look at that. It doesn't really make sense to have one of these meetings in Montry and Biltmore Forest, as they stated in the proposal. So it seems like it'd be good to look at that and make sure that it's meetings that are actually getting out in these different school districts.
Yeah, thank you for that feedback comment briefly. The scope requires that the vendor collaborate with Buncombe County's CAPE, which is Communications and Public Engagement, to design a communication and engagement plan. And that will also include collaboration with the communication departments of both school systems. So what we've relied on in the proposal was their sense of how, knowing what they knew at the time of proposing, they would see that going, but it will certainly be co-designed or co-created with our local communications staff before we implement.
And then the other thing, it mentioned in there somewhere, I believe, that they were open to negotiation, and I just wondered, did you, with the cost of this, this is fairly significant, did you work with them any on the cost with that negotiation?
The amount that you see as the proposed amount is their proposed budget.
So there was...
That there was...
So that's their request, that there hasn't been a negotiation on that price, that's just what their request was, to do that scope of work?
Correct. We proposed to go with the scope of work as it was proposed.
I have two questions. One is, has this firm done consolidation studies before?
I wonder during these questions if we reach a point, and I'm looking at my county manager here, where Prismatic Services might better speak to their experience than me, Chair, or...
It's a question, if you know the answer, you can answer it. If you don't, then ask them to answer it.
Because I think it's important to know. If they have done some, great. We need to check out where they've done the studies to see, you know...
So we looked at work samples, including previous experience with consolidation. It's hard to find an apples-to-apples experience that exactly mirrors what we've got going on in Buncombe County and Asheville City Schools. There was a recent consolidation where it was within an overall district, looking at school-level information, and I'd like to look over my shoulder and fact-check if...
And the other question I have is, since the state mandated this, why aren't they paying for it? We didn't request it. The people of Buncombe County didn't request this. So if they're going to mandate it, why can't they pay for it? Are we going to send them the bill?
It's a fair question, and my understanding is that a mechanism that the county could use is our legislative agenda to request to have that funding included in an upcoming budget, to reimburse Buncombe County for the expense.
We have reached out with our lobbyist group and have talked to them about requesting some funds. They have actually recommended that we can talk to our delegation more informally and add it to the agenda. So we would start those conversations and see if they can go anywhere with that, and we can then report back to you if we get an answer that they would pay for it, or some portion of it.
Yeah, especially since we didn't ask for it.
Rachel, thank you so much for reminding everyone here who requested this consolidation study. I think over the past few weeks, I've specifically heard, as I've been out and about, you know, folks really wanting to know why the Commissioners would do this. And so thank you for reminding everyone that this was a Senate and House bill that was forced upon us. We did not ask for this. And second, before I ask my question, I do want to state that, these are my questions. I'm often quoted as being the spouse of a school employee, and I'm fully capable of asking my own questions, and they do not have anything to do with who I'm married to. So with that said, we've seen recently that people are really tied to their schools and their school communities. And as you start talking about consolidation, what is Prismatic's experience in ensuring that as much bias as possible is not brought into this, but also ensuring that it's not an emotional decision that is made? Because people do feel really tied to their school and their school community, and I think that is probably why I've heard so much recently from folks wanting to know why we would do this, and not fully understanding that this has been put upon us, because it is an emotional decision.
In designing the RFP, in designing the RFP and in reviewing selections, we placed a lot of emphasis on the qualitative data and the community engagement, knowing that that is an important part of the context and local information about the feasibility of a consolidation or merger. And so we looked at Prismatic's background and approach to communication, to community engagement, and to including that information related to objectivity. That was another piece you heard me mention, coming in with an unbiased perspective and curious perspective about where the data and where the information will lead in terms of findings, was something that stood out in the review. And then the other sort of biased, focused question is around equity, and the project team really worked hard to try to make sure that we were including questions and conversation with applicant vendors about how, what techniques or approaches they might use to include voices of people that would tend to have impact from whatever decision might come from the study, and that was something we felt satisfied with as well.
Thank you, I really appreciate that last component. I think that's a really significant part of this, is ensuring that those folks who are often excluded and underrepresented have a significant role in this process, too. So thank you, I appreciate the thoughtfulness. Can you speak at all, this is my last question, to the project initiation piece, and what that local team will look like, the interviewing of local leaders, or is that forthcoming once the contract is finalized?
So we've had some preliminary conversations. Depending on the direction of tonight's vote, we have a contract that can be ready to be in effect as of April 1st. And so those early meetings would include me as the project manager on county staff, the two liaisons, one each from the school systems, who are those assistant/associate superintendents, and then that already established project team that hasn't been together since last November. So bringing that advisory group back together, and then going through the project plan, reviewing it, providing any feedback, asking for any adjustments, like the ones that Commissioner Wells was mentioning around community engagement, and then beginning with initial lists of stakeholders for interviewing and data requests, so that their team can begin their analysis.
Thank you, Rachel. I appreciate your thoughtful leadership on this, and know that you'll lead a good process. Thank you.
I have a comment and a question. I guess I just wanted to repeat kind of what I said last time in terms of, I think it was a great idea, an important idea, that we took on the consolidation study as a county, so the school boards didn't have to. But in putting our name on this, you know, it creates the impression with the public that we're in charge, and that we have agency over kind of what happens next and what decisions are made. And so I think it's important for the consultant to understand that, and to reiterate what Commissioner Edward said in terms of who requested this, and kind of who has the authority to make next steps happen and the decisions happen. So it's just important to remind the public that as this process continues. I guess my question is, would be proposed to the Prismatic folks themselves, if that's okay? Looking at the, you know, the proposed approach slide, what comes to mind is kind of the obvious things, like there might be efficiencies in the consolidation, there's also going to be a lot of opinions among stakeholders and parents and that sort of thing. Those are the obvious things. But I'm wondering if there's, in your experience, if there are discussions that you'll have with parents or employers or institutions of higher learning in terms of what the demand is for the types of schools that we have, the types of programming that our school systems have, in terms of like, what do parents want to see in school systems, in specific schools, and what do employers and higher education institutions want to see as products of those school systems?
So, good evening. I'm Dr. Tasha Prieto, President of Prismatic Services. In response to your question, we've got a robust amount of community involvement and community input embedded in the project plan. Locations TBD, but we did put in there 12, so we have flexibilities to where we put them. In terms of, you know, this kind of a project, we're proposing to gather both qualitative and quantitative data. I don't know how much research you've looked at on the consolidation issue. We have looked at it. The research base is relatively thin, and like many things in the pre-K-12 research world, the answer often is, it depends. And so I point to some of the earlier research studies that were done specifically about this potential merger, and one of them, one of my favorite examples, and I've used it a couple of times already, is that, you know, an argument in favor of a merger in the '80s was because then they would only need to buy one computer instead of two. And that was, you know, one computer at the time was very expensive, and so that was an argument in favor of it. Obviously not something we would consider now. But the research base does not have a lot of economic findings that are, you know, hardcore, you're absolutely going to save X percent if you reduce it. A lot of what we deal with in terms of the financial aspects is looking at perceptions of how much we might save versus reality. And so that's a big piece of our work there. There is an equity component to it. That is something that I think is a valid concern. If, you know, food services in one school system are far superior to food services in the other system, there's an equity issue that we might want to address. And that goes all the way through all the operational and the educational side. As far as the qualitative piece, you're absolutely right. The community has a right to have input into what their schools look like. I tend to look at it from the perspective of, you know, are we a community that wants to have many small schools, or are we a community... are we a community that wants to have, you know, one larger school? The benefits to each side, and drawbacks to each approach, frankly. And so, but that's, you know, neither here nor there to us as outsiders. It's really dependent upon what the local community wants to do. And so we are very sensitive to that piece. Sometimes, to be completely upfront about it, what we find with the community input is that there's more fear involved in the discussion than there is irrational, you know, this is a really good reason why. And we do that a lot when we deal with school closures. We've dealt with a number of school districts in helping them work towards school closure. And so recognizing how emotional those issues are for them is an important part of the process. I, you know, fully open to whatever might come up in the qualitative side of the house that are deciding factors. Sometimes it comes down to, when we're looking at school closures, you know, it's an extra 20 minutes on the bus if we do a school closure, and that becomes a very real hurdle to cross. We're looking at doing that right now with the school district in Illinois. And so those kinds of things definitely come into play. I think that balancing the qualitative and the quantitative is often the hardest part of these studies, because sometimes they are not aligned. You know, when we look at school closures, sometimes it is very obvious the benefits to be gained from a school closure within a district, but the qualitative piece is very much not aligned with that. And so that's an area, you know, if we get there, we get there, and we have to cross that when we get there. But as far as the concerns about objectivity, we don't live here. We will follow the research and then follow what we find here.
I have a follow-up question to that. So with the analysis that you'll do, partly I want to kind of ask if I make sure I understand what you just said correctly or clarify. Are you saying that, just based on like, past research around consolidations that have occurred in other communities, there's not a large basis for assessing what the economies of scale or efficiencies are likely to be achieved through a merger? Is that, is that the point you were, you were making? And then, and then maybe the follow-up question is, with the process that you will use to look at Asheville-Buncombe's districts, and if they are, if they were merged into a single system, do you expect to be able to do like a detailed calculation of what the efficiencies would be from specifically if that step were taken in our community?
So spoiler alert, a large portion of my dissertation was written on economies of scale in small versus large school districts. And so what you find is the belief of economies of scale are not always there. And a nice, easy example for me to look at was if we merged a large school district and a small school district anywhere, and said, okay, well, now we only need one superintendent. That's the easy one, right? The staff below that would then say, well, wait a second. I'm taking on the additional workload of X number of schools. I'm going to need some more staff in order to be able to do that, because I'm already stretched thin. And so it's not always as easy enough to say as, you know, the entire central office would lose one person in the larger school district, and the rest of the central office would be the same size. It doesn't typically work that way. Larger school districts generate larger school central offices, and then there are more layers of management. And so efficiencies of scale are often a goal. We don't often see them very much realized in practice, because when you start to pull these pieces together, you have that push and pull. You know, now I'm being asked to take on more responsibility. I need more staff. And so that, that question is, the research is fairly solid there that economies of scale have been chased for, at least since the 90s, in various areas within school districts. And you may achieve some, but you don't usually achieve as much as you think you're going to get. Now, there's, there are a few counterexamples to that out there, but I'd say that the research tends in that direction. In answer to your second question, yes, as much as we can, we will cost out what the benefits might be, recognizing that one of the big benefits we want to look at is equity, and equity of educational opportunities, which may not be quantifiable.
Okay. Well, I'm glad to ask that. So it sounds like there is a lot of data, there is a lot of research around this question from previous communities that went through consolidations?
There's a fair amount. I think that what you see is much like what y'all have been through. Many approaches to it over years, and sometimes the answer depends on what year we're looking at it. You know, it depends on the relative position of the districts at the time.
Okay, thanks.
Just have a follow-up question for Rachel, actually. So since y'all decided, I'd like to hear more about why you decided to go ahead and go exactly with that proposal, rather than trying to negotiate any. There must have been some reason.
The, my understanding of the negotiation was to adjust the scope of work and pricing accordingly, and we were really excited about the number of onsite days, the number of hours dedicated to each phase of the project. I think it was called task in the proposal, and the number of personnel brought to bear to assist on the project, and felt that that would be adequate to accomplish the scope of what we were looking for, and found it to be a reasonable cost in comparison with other proposals of interest to us.
Any other questions or comments, or a motion?
Insofar as this is mandated and we're happy with the services that Rachel's negotiated for, I'd move that we approve the award for the vendor to conduct the feasibility study in the budget amendment as well.
I'll second it. I'll just make a couple of comments. So thanks for bringing a proposal forward, and it sounds like from the staff's review, they're really happy to have this proposal and think it's a very solid approach to this. Won't lie, the price tag gives some heartburn. You know, maybe if we could kind of go back in time, maybe we would have said, look, we have to do this, and we're going to budget no more than this amount to do this. So everyone who brings a proposal forward knows, like, this is how much money we have to spend on it. Like, we didn't do that, so it's water under the bridge. This is a really important question. I do want us to do this, I want us to do this right, you know, so I don't feel like now's the time to, I wish it was a lower price tag, definitely, but thoughtful proposals come forward, so I think we should follow through on it. And this wasn't a decision, as has been pointed out, that got initiated from the local level, but I think we want it to be a process that does have integrity and is a healthy and constructive process regardless of how it turns out, which we don't know how that will turn out at this point. So for those reasons, I'll support it. Any other questions or comments?
Sorry.
And we should definitely try to get the state to give us the money back, for sure.
I want to commend the staff for what you've done, and I applaud you for the work you've done on this. I think it's a good job, but I will be voting against it. And the reason I'm voting against it, I don't like the mandates and them telling us what we have to do. So I want to make sure that this is not going to be a unanimous vote.
Any other questions or comments? All right. You know, I agree with that in a lot of ways, you know, I mean, however, you know, I will say, like, this is, this is, this is a study, you know, it's not, like, again, the outcome of this is not, is not known, right? So it's, it's going to be, if, if we go through this process and we get a lot of great information, and I think we will, I think we'll get a lot of good, a lot of good data, and I think it'll spark a lot of good discussion in the community. You know, if the legislature attempted to mandate some outcome to this that is contrary to what the public support is for the future of our school systems, and if the local school systems, and if we as the county commission, you know, if the legislature tries to do something to force a future outcome up to our schools that's divergent with what our community believes is the right course to go down, then, you know, I'd certainly believe we should fight that 100%.
Brownie.
But is, but is, let me just finish real quick. You know, but I mean, as long as I've been here, I mean, people have asked this question, gosh, I mean, just, I can't, I can't count the number of times people have said, you know, what do you think is the right thing to do around the future of the schools? Is it better to have two separate districts, or is it better to have a single district for the future? I've had my opinion on that over time. It kind of has shifted from time to time. But I do think, I do think this is an important question, and I do think this process, even though I kind of don't like where it originated from, I'm really hopeful that it does lead to a really allow our community to step back and look at this. I mean, the funding of public education is the single largest, like, non-county core services investment we make every year, and it's our, it's our most important priority, is assuring a good public education system. So I'm hoping that this can be a good, healthy process that illuminates this question, even though I don't particularly like the way it originated either. So I hope good can come, can come of it, but.
Well, I agree. I hope it can. But you didn't hear what I said. I said, the reason I'm voting against it is because I don't like the way that they mandated it and didn't give us the money to do it. And it's not fair. So I will be voting against it. I'm not going to change that.
I totally agree.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay, there's a motion and second. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Thank you for bringing this forward, and we look forward to learning more and seeing the process take next steps. All right. All right, the next item is the employee policy update.
Good evening, Commission. My name's Amy Flaherty. I'm the HR Operations Manager and here today to bring you several policies that we are hoping to make revisions on. So a background as to where we've come from, our Personnel Ordinance is going through updates to eliminate conflicting language, to increase transparency, and then provide employees with greater detail on HR operations. So as part of this project, the leave benefits and supplemental pay policies became standalone policies in May of 2022. And then the overtime policy is a new policy that we're bringing forward. We're continuing to make edits on the Personnel Ordinance, so we're pulling language out of that to create the standalone policy, and we'll be bringing the ordinance to you this summer with some additional language. And then all HR policies are reviewed on an annual basis to see if any changes need to be made. So the policies that we're looking for approval for tonight are overtime pay, benefits, leave, and supplemental pay. Overtime pay policy is a new policy. This provides guidance on pay for work performed by non-exempt employees outside of their regularly scheduled hours. We moved the language for comp time from the supplemental pay policy to the overtime pay policy. And then we added clarification on which departments receive overtime and which departments receive comp time. Benefits policy, we edited to clarify existing language. We moved several sections to the procedures. And then we edited the measurement period for the Affordable Care Act from 10 months to 11 months to align with our other compensation updates. Leave policy, we also edited to clarify existing language. We moved several sections to procedures. The paid parental and family leave policy was a separate standalone policy, and in revising these policies, it made sense for us to consolidate those into one policy and move that language into this leave policy. As part of our funeral bereavement leave benefit, we are requesting to add the loss of a baby through miscarriage or stillbirth. And then we are adjusting the maximum leave accrual for shift workers. This would be anyone hired March 23rd, 2024 or after, and that date was chosen because that's our new pay period date. Supplemental pay policy, we also edited to clarify existing language. And then the other piece of this is, in the bilingual agreement that employees sign, they signed that they would be asked in an emergency to use their skills. And so because we had that in the agreement, we did add that to the policy as well to make it transparent from the get-go, that that's something that might be asked of them. We are requesting a compensation change for supplemental pay for the bilingual pay stipend. So currently, our category C would be somebody that has the conversational skills and the reading and writing, and so we are requesting that it goes from 100 per paycheck to 125. The reason being, category A currently is our translational. That pays 50 per paycheck. If someone had just had category B for reading and writing, that would be 75. So the two total would be 125, and currently the two total, we offer 100. So with 12 employees currently receiving that 100 per paycheck, the $25 increase for these employees per paycheck would result in a total increase of 7,800 in the fiscal year. So our recommendation is that the Commission approve the following policies: benefits, leave, supplemental pay, and overtime pay. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Can you speak just a little bit more about, since this is a new policy, the decision process on which departments receive overtime versus the compensatory?
Certainly. So it's my understanding that a few years ago, it was, the departments had a meeting and they had to decide. They can choose comp time or overtime. The law doesn't allow them to fluctuate between the two, and so they had to choose what would work best for their departments. And so that was already in the policy, but it was a little bit hard to follow when reading the policy. And so essentially, we created a chart to make it really easy for someone in that department to find out which one they would get.
Can this be accomplished in one motion, or do we need multiple?
I move to approve the policies as presented.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I'd like to ask that we take a, can we take a five-minute break? We're going to take a five-minute break. All right. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is consideration of a request to enter into negotiations on the solid waste collection agreement, and Dane Peterson is here to help us out with this item.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good afternoon. Good to see everybody. Want to give a shout out to the people that work hard every day in our communities, keeping things safe, environment, the public. We, we appreciate what y'all do. So Commissioners, I am here this evening to make a recommendation that this board approve, a staff recommendation, to move into negotiations with one of the firms that submitted application to our requests for proposals for solid waste and recycling collections in the unincorporated areas of Buncombe County. As a reminder, some of the key priorities and key items within the RFP, this contract will be a seven-year term contract with a one-year extension option, and this new contract will be effective January 1st, 2025. The basic service and the parameters of that are weekly trash pickup, every other week recycling. The doctor's note program will, will continue. The low-income program, we had a place for, in the RFP, for proposers to give some thoughts on programmatic ideas for the low-income program, and that was an optional. Subscription, subscription cost increased tied to CPIU after two full years. So the, the first two years of the new contract will be no price increase allowed. And then the following years, after the first two years, will be inflationary base, and that'll be tied to the CPIU indices, and will be, that's how the increase in costs will be based from. The waste and recycling cart transition plan, we wanted to hear from proposers their management plan for the transition, including carts, services, and fleet, things of that nature. The bear cart program, think about the subscribers' option to purchase or lease bear carts from the provider. Bulky waste, and that's if you have a couch, chair, furniture, bulky item, and you want to schedule that with the service provider for the program around that, and also for specialized trucks for hard-to-reach areas. We did receive two responsive and responsible bids to this RFP, one from Waste Pro and one from FCC Environmental Services. So speaking to the evaluation process, the RFP had a score matrix for companies to respond to on the key county priorities. Companies were required to attend a mandatory pre-bid conference prior to submitting their applications. And then the, again, the two applications were submitted and received. And we were fortunate to establish a group of professionals on the evaluation committee or the panel. This was, this was no easy lift. There, you think two proposals, you know, that shouldn't be that, but there's, these were very detailed. A lot of respect for the process, and this is, this is a major contract, and that's the way this panel approached it. It was a very thorough analysis. We had representation from Buncombe County staff members, the City of Asheville Sanitation Department, as well as the Land of Sky Waste Reduction Department. On that board, we appreciate all their efforts. Through, through the evaluation process, questions were developed by panel members, and those were submitted to the companies based on the panel's feedback. We scheduled interviews and presentations with both companies, and we actually conducted those this past week. And based on this process, the panel has provided recommendation based from the presentation, interview applications, references that were provided in the checks, and panel members' feedback. So talking about the interview and presentation process, each vendor presented on specific plans associated with the scope of work in Buncombe County, and making sure that, you know, we wanted to see that they had a firm understanding of the needs in this market. Certainly, they're special and, and unique compared to other markets. A transition plan, you know, obviously, that's a very important part of this. If a new vendor were awarded, what that transition plan would look like. Understanding of the service area, so, you know, we, we heard about the tough-to-get-to areas, narrow roads, those things like that. We wanted to see that the proposers had done their homework and, and understood those, those areas. Plans for customer communication, excuse me, engagement outreach, we wanted to hear the proposers' plans on how they're gonna keep in communication, how they're gonna communicate through the transition process, and then throughout the application of service. Use of technology, wanted to hear how technology proposed would be utilized in the field, in the offices for visibility of services, and also for communication with customers and, and with Buncombe County staff. And also their approach to acquiring and maintaining staffing levels in a, in historically tight labor market. So based on the evaluation committee review and interview with proposers, staff is requesting authority from this board of commissioners to move forward with negotiations with FCC Environmental. That is the request you have before you. If, if this is approved this evening, pending successful negotiation, the staff will be bringing back two readings for approval of the franchise agreement following that. So just wanted to give an idea of, of next steps in the process if this is approved.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And I'll, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
All right, Commissioners, questions?
Dana, I have two. Thank you for your presentation. Can you talk to us a little bit about what FCC's hiring plan could potentially look like? We know that's been a, a challenge, you know, across a lot of industries in the past few years. And then the follow-up piece to that is how do their wages and benefits align with the county's strategic goals specifically around increased wages for Buncombe County residents?
Thank you for that question, Commissioner. Throughout, excuse me, throughout the, their proposal to the RFP and also in the interview process, FCC was really clear on their approach to evaluating labor markets. They've done their evaluation, their process. They feel very comfortable that they're able to, they will be able to hire and sustain, retain qualified staff. Obviously, their target is, you know, local staff. That's, that's where the work has got to come from and where the workers will come from. What they say their advantage with a, they tout a very low turnover ratio in markets. And I think a key that they've expressed to us is their benefit package, their accessibility to benefits right away as soon as staff are, are starting or at least close to their starting date. And I think just really the overall analysis of understanding the labor market, they have a comfort level they've assured us that they will be able to staff and have the appropriate amount of staff and retain them.
Thank you, Dana. I have a couple of questions. Can you speak to some of the key considerations of why you're recommending to select FCC, as well as, did you speak with some of the other localities to confirm the quality of service delivery in those areas where they are the provider?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that. FCC's proposal, really, there was a lot of focus on customer service and how, how they engage with the customers, the technology that, that they leverage. And, and the local approach was used a lot in their communication to us, local staffing, local dedicated websites, dedicated staff here in Buncombe County to answer phone calls, not sharing markets or sharing. answer phone calls, not sharing markets or sharing resources, but this is the focus of this market. Dedicated website, dedicated resources to the subscribers and to the residents of Buncombe. That was evident throughout their proposal. You know, obviously, a brand-new fleet has been proposed. It's, it's clear that they have done the, the research and gotten out on the roads. They've taken pictures of a lot of the hard-to-reach areas. They've proposed fleet that is nimble, smaller trucks for the hard-to-reach areas, and the way that they structured their response, it, it's clear that they have really evaluated the market. So I'm sorry, Commissioner, your second part of that question?
Second part was, yes. Have you spoken with any of the localities where they do provide service?
Yes, ma'am. So the, the RFP requirement was three references. They, FCC provided those and provided a few more for context. Yes, we have reached out. We've talked to seven other locations. There, there was one, as far as the way that we rated the, the feedback, you know, how long have you had services? Are you happy with services? Give us feedback. There was one of those markets that said service was good, good to excellent. The other remaining six were, were excellent. So that was the references and the feedback we got. And other, you know, other sources of information that I felt like were helpful for the panel was, it's, it's a large transition process, and that's something that we've, we've talked about with the board. We've talked a lot internally about that. And with FCC's experience in transitions, they have transition markets our size, but also double, triple, even four times the size of our markets, within the window of time that we're talking about for this transition to take place. So they, they understand how that process works. Obviously, they've keyed in their proposal to work with the incumbent hauler and, and to make as minimal disruption to current collections as, as, you know, if, looking towards the transition to the new service.
Just one last, really quick question for me. What's, is their corporate name FCC Environmental LLC?
FCC Environmental Services LLC is on the cover page.
Okay.
Well, Dane, the other areas you checked with, are any of them geographically like us? I mean...
No, sir. There, there are some areas that have, I would say, some hills. There's definitely some inclement weather areas like Omaha, Nebraska, where snow is certainly a, a, something they contend with. But as far as, it's, it's hard to find a location like ours, isn't it?
Right.
But, but no, sir. I would say that, you know, obviously, a Florida presence, Texas presence, Nebraska presence, they have experience with the small truck fleets as far as for valley collection, those type of things, but nothing really apples-to-apples to our market, Commissioner.
Right. So this is not a vote to enter into the agreement? This is just a, this is a vote to authorize negotiations with FCC?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but what's the, assuming the negotiations are productive and, and are reaching some alignment around the terms, how, how long do you think that, that process might last before you reach a conclusion either, either favorable, or you kind of reach a conclusion of like, we're, we're not getting on the same page? What's your, how long do you want this process to go?
Our target is to come back to this board in April. So next month, that, that's our goal. We have been working on negotiation points now so that we are clear how to start the conversation with, with the company as, as, you know, if this is approved this evening. So that, that's my goal, Chairman, is to have this back in April. We, we want to give as much time as possible for the transition process. You know, FCC does have letters of commitment from manufacturers, those things that they've shared in the proposal for fleet. So we, we're gonna target to move fast, but make sure that it's quality, and we're getting the, the best processing that we can for the service.
Okay. All right. And then once, as you said, once the negotiation process is complete, if there is a further recommendation to move forward, that will take place at two different county commissioner meetings to enact a decision on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Other questions?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion based on staff's recommendation and the evaluation process to request staff begin negotiations with FCC.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right. Thank you, Dane.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, commissioners, the last item under new business is the FY 2024 Joint Committee Recommended Project, the AB Tech Master Plan, and John Hudson, our budget director, will explain this item.
Good evening. So AB Tech Master Plan, this budget amendment appropriates $500,000 of Article 46 sales tax revenues to budget for a master plan for AB Tech facilities as the current master plan expires this year. This recommendation was approved by the AB Tech Buncombe County Joint Capital Advisory Committee at their February 26th meeting, and AB Tech is here if you have further questions.
All right, commissioners. Any questions?
So I guess with maybe one of the commissioners that sits on the committee, just, can you speak some to the, the thought process and everything? Are they, so the previous plan, has everything been implemented with that? Are there things still outstanding?
So Dr. Gossett, I'll invite you or, or your representative up. Dirk would be able to speak to more detail. I think a lot of this is just forward-looking. I'm, I can't speak to all of it being cleared up, but maybe you can share that we've completely checked every box in the previous?
Thank you for that question. That's an interesting question. I don't know the answer. My guess is 10 years is a long time, and so many things change, which is really why we're asking for this new master plan. Higher education, as, as I tell our faculty and, and staff, changing underneath our feet. The demands of our students, the, the way we do our instruction is constantly changing. We're really hoping to get these architects who do this regularly to help us vision an awful lot of, of what we are doing with our present facilities and for the future, what our needs are.
Dirk, do you have a more specific?
Maybe. If we go back 10 years, the, the original plan was paid for by the newly enacted Article 46 provisions, and there was some, I, I would say a lot of the big pieces got put into place, the conference center, the parking deck. And so, but a lot of the little things did not, and, and partly was that our deferred maintenance was so great that we really focused Article 46 on dealing with that on a 10-year plan. And so I would say that it was probably 50/50 in terms of what was actually implemented versus, versus what we intended to do. It's 10 years later now. We've had a great record of implementing and addressing a plan to address the deferred maintenance, and so we're in pretty good shape. But, but our facilities are 10 years older now, and there are changes in the, the economy of higher education and, and what works best for faculty and students. And so with all that in mind, we want to embrace all of that and just have a better vision moving forward in the next 10 years, and hopefully it'll be more fully implemented than what we did 10 years ago.
Welcome. And there hasn't been a firm selected to do the plan. Is that correct, or there has?
We, we have actually, we, we, what we're asking for is approval of the budget to proceed with the contracting. We did go through a rest, a RFQ process, and there were seven firms that responded. We narrowed that down to five, and then we narrowed it to two. And so there is a firm that's waiting to be under contract. They came in with a, a expected price. We reviewed the scope with them, and they actually reduced it slightly, so we did negotiate. And there, that firm, I can tell you, is, is McMillan, Paston, Smith. And so they're standing ready, waiting for this budget approval, green light, so that we can go ahead and finalize matters with that firm.
During our last meeting, they project, provided a timeline that was agreeable to everyone on the board. It seemed like it's gonna be done reasonably quickly and efficiently, so.
Yes, then nine, nine to 12 months.
I'll move that we approve the budget amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Appreciate you. All right, commissioners, we come to our board appointments. Remember, we're adding the audit committee item as we discussed in the briefing. But first, let's look at the Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee. I'll make a motion. We appoint, reappoint Eileen McMinn and Deborah Olt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? On the Adult Care Home Committee Advisory Committee, I'll move we appoint Kathleen Cooper.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? On the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, I move we appoint Sonanda Kumaruguru. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then we come to the audit committee item that we discussed in the briefing meeting.
Yes, and we conducted interviews this morning, both highly qualified, and the audit committee is recommending Michael Figuera, Figuera.
Make a motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you to everyone who is serving on our boards and commissions. We appreciate it. Okay. Are there any updates from commissioners about any boards and commissions that they want to share at the meeting tonight?
Yes, I'll mention some, as, an update from our School Capital Commission. We, our staff has brought to us, and we're making some, some very good changes to our process, and actually, we're going to be working on a fiscal year with that. So this year will be a change for us. So we're, we're really geared up and working with our school partners to get it on that cycle. So we think that's gonna be the best going forward. And also, they came to us and with a recommended, recommendation that we're gonna be looking at. So finance will look at and perform a debt versus pay-go analysis, and then come to us with the recommendation. In the past, we've always done the, the debt, but now we're gonna actually assess that and have an analysis and look at that with the funding as we're going forward. And so most, most time, there'll be some debt, but there'll probably be some pay-go as well. And it looks like probably for this year, or for this, this very short cycle, to get us on this fiscal year cycle, we're gonna have around 15 million is gonna be available for funding for this, this coming cycle, is, is what they're projecting right now. We'll know more here in April.
Great. Anything else? All right. We have a couple of announcements. On April 2nd, at 3:00 PM, the county commissioners will hold their briefing meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville. On April 2nd, at 5:00 PM, the commissioners will hold their regular meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326 in downtown Asheville.
Commissioners, you do have a budget work session next Tuesday? I apologize it's not on there, but next Tuesday, the 26th, at 9 o'clock, 9 till 2, I believe? 10. John has told me it starts at 10, not 9.
Okay, on which date?
I had 9 as well.
Okay. On which date?
Tuesday, next, a week from today, the 26th.
March 26th. Okay. Thank you for making sure we...
No such.
9, 9:00 AM?
Here, here in the building. It'll be downstairs in the first floor.
Okay. All right. So we'll have a public budget planning meeting?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Or adjourned?